This conference will now be recorded.
Yeah, I know, so.
Yeah, I know, so.
That would have to go on ladies watch just.
They gotta use their spell check.
I saw that, it's kind of stood out right away for some reason. That's what I was thinking we're gonna have to, because, oh, there he is. There he is. I don't know. Okay, I'd like to call the ordered city council meeting of Zephyr Hills, Florida, Tuesday, November 12th, 2024. It is 6:00 PM. City Clerk, can I have the roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Kenneth Burgess.
Here.
Charles Proctor.
Here.
Lance Smith.
Here.
Jody Wilkerson.
Here.
Steven Spina.
Here.
Mayor Munson.
Here.
William Poe.
Here.
Matthew Maggar.
Here.
All right, thank you, Ricardo. At this time, we're going to have the invocation. It's going to be delivered by Dennis Harmison, Pastor Dennis Harmison of the Awake Wesleyan Church, and then we'll follow that with a pledge of allegiance.
Father, we thank you for the privilege of being able to participate in our land's government. We ask you, as you've instructed us to, humble ourselves and pray, to seek you in all that we do. So here we are, seeking your will and your governance among us, that your will would be done in this chamber, that as we seek what needs to be done, we will also seek your will. Lord, guide us and direct us that your will would be done. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
Flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, Dennis, for that invocation. At this time, I'd like to welcome everybody to the meeting, and if I could remind you to silence your electronic devices at this time. And beginning of the meeting here, we're going to have our time for citizens' comments, so I will see if anybody has signed up to speak, and we do have someone signed up.
I have several people signed up tonight.
Okay.
First, I have, and I apologize to say this wrong, Ron Aperspach.
I'll take close.
Okay, and I'd like to remind everybody, as you come forward, you need to state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes for your comments.
My name is Ron Aperspach. I live in Wesley Chapel, 3244 Steeplechase Road. I'm here representing a family friend in concerns about the issues we've been having by the YMCA. I want to thank Lance for supposedly, and hopefully, putting together a meeting so we can discuss it with the county, Swift Mud, and the city, and thanks to Todd Vanderberg for his communicating with me and helping me navigate my way through the government procedures. This is my first time speaking in front of the city, so forgive me if I screw up, so. Our concerns are, the neighborhood that's been there for forty-some years have never had any water issues until the YMCA was built, and the retention pond for the YMCA has a overflow into my family friend's backyard. So it got flooded, five foot of water in his house, and I understand this is a 200-year event, but we've had problems with water before Helene and before Milton. Danny Burgess was nice enough to get us a Tiger Dam after Helene because he was aware of the water issue we were having, and this goes back to 2019 when I've talked to Swift Mud, and they're saying there's nothing we can do because it's private property. The city doesn't want to do anything, the county doesn't want to do anything. The county supposedly has come out and looked at it, brought engineers out, and pretty much thrown up their hands because Geiger Road has no ditches to take water, so water from Geiger Road comes down and accumulates in the lowest point of that neighborhood, which is my family friend. So now they're building the cottages over there with an elevation of five foot higher, and they say, well, we're putting three retention ponds in there. That should catch the water, but I don't see how that can happen. Not being an engineer, I don't understand all that. All I know is, his house is the lowest point in that area, so it collects water. And from what I understand, Black Marlin has been approved to develop next to his house, too. So the development plans have not been proposed, so we don't know where that retention pond for them is going to go. We don't know where to go. The house has been in sewage since October 10th. The walls are full of mold, and do we repair it, remodel it? We just need help from either the city, the county, Swift Mud, the state. We don't know where to turn. We don't know what to do. So again, I want to thank Lance for setting up a meeting so we can get some of those questions answered, but I was hoping, and I mentioned it at the meeting in Dave City, if we could stop the development around that area till we come up with a solution. It's like these people that lived there for forty years have no recourse. They're being pushed out by these new developments. So I'm hoping that we get some answers in the meeting upcoming.
Okay, thank you. I'm not going to try and say Aperspach, is that close?
That's even better.
Okay, okay, for your comments. And I think it's going to take a combination of a lot of entities together to come up with a solution there, but I'll let the city manager, if he has anything, I mean, if we're talking about a meeting coming up, then I guess there's really nothing to add at this time till we have the meeting, or?
I do not have a date and time for the meeting, no.
Okay, but then you don't have anything as far as like, I mean, I think that's going to probably be the next step, and maybe I'll let Lance address it since he's kind of working on it.
Thank you, and I thank you for coming out tonight. And the young lady that called me, I've known almost all her life, for sure. She played soccer with me, and just a great young lady. And her concern is valid, for sure. Do I build back, you know, knowing we flooded already, you know? So my take on it is, we need to try and come up with some type of solution with, to get some outfall, and we, in my mind, we have a solution. I'm not an engineer, but I do know there's an outfall within a quarter mile that if we can get the water to there, it goes through the Zephyr Hills Creek Shed and goes on out. So I'm hopeful to get the county and everybody who knows more than me together, see if we can come up with a solution.
Well, my other concern is, too, is that this property has been sitting in sewage, and they have a one-year-old, and I can't imagine him going out in the yard and playing. What do we do? Is that land condemned now? Do we have to dig, if we rebuild, do we have to go fifteen foot higher than, I don't know? We don't know where to turn.
I understand, yeah, I understand. And I wish I knew the answer, but we'll try and work through it somehow and get it to, we need to get the water not collecting there, get it downstream. That's my, like I said, I'm not an engineer, but I just know in my mind, that's what we need to do.
In my opinion is that his property should be a retention pond, being the lowest part in the area.
You could very well be right, too. That could be correct.
Yeah, may I say something? You know, this property's in the county, surrounded by city, so I think that's why it's got to be a mutual solution to it. But that property, in fact, the back street flooded in 2024, I think.
2004.
2000, 2004. So it's been a persistent problem. It's not something from just this event, so.
Well, it must have been known because Swift Mud put that overflow in there, so they knew it was going to overflow. And did they design it for the YMCA to drain the pool into the retention pond before the storm?
Yeah, that's a whole nother question. I don't know. Probably not, I wouldn't think. But the Y was built in 1995, but this has been a persistent problem, and long before any other development was done there, except the Y. So I think that, you know, if you can get to that outlet, that would be the best solution. But you might have to have some of those properties condemned, because it makes no sense, you know, to rebuild and have those low spots. And as you said, it comes down from Geiger Road as well. So they're getting water from multiple locations.
And I would urge you to, you know, stay in contact with the city manager and find out when that meeting is going to be, take place, and if, you know, it could be full.
Don't worry, I've been in contact.
And we need to be sure that the county's involved, too.
Right, and yeah.
That's Swift Mud, but.
It's definitely going to take all the entities involved. And thank you. Okay? I have Mr. David Morrell. Again, name and address, and you'll have your three minutes for comments.
My name is David Morrell. I actually live in the county. I have property in Zephyr Hills, though. My concern is, up on Wire Road where I live, which is right across from the old dairy that is now a city subdivision, the property has been razed significantly to the point where it's creating a, what can I say, a holding for water on the east side of Wire Road. The natural drainage, I learned many years ago from elders, that it comes to the east side and flows over to the west side, of which now is greatly razed, so it can't go anywhere. I understand that plans are being made to widen Wire Road, and if it's widened, it's even going to take more of that natural low ground away and, again, create a sink area, of which, if anybody has driven it recently, there are tankers tanking water out now because the county, is my understanding, has the big relief hole on the east side of Wire Road, which is now being fed by the relief hole for the subdivision on the west side of the road. So a gentleman has four feet of water above his pool in his backyard right now, and they're trying to relieve it, but I don't see fifty tankers solving the problem, but they're at least making an attempt. My concern, I've had water in my backyard this year that I've never seen, and I understand the flooding situation, ladies and gentlemen, but it was to the point where it could have stopped the septic system. It did saturate the ground to the point where two trees fell in my backyard, one missing the house by inches. And I know that's nothing compared to what a lot of individuals are experiencing, like the gentleman that was just up here. But my concern is, I understand there's going to be more subdivision building on the east side. Where's that water going? Because everybody on Wire Road have had homes there for decades, and now we're dealing with water that we'd never dealt with before. I've, in the past, helped the county out by allowing them to pump water from properties north of me, to the point where they started a artesian well and stopped pumping because they said, we got a problem. But they did agree with me. The water flows from the east side to the west side, and the west side now is elevated significantly. I've driven it with a meter that tells me how many feet above sea level we're at. My shed is at 69. The north side of that subdivision is at about 78, so quite a bit higher. And that's where everything's settled. The north side of that subdivision, my understanding, was an abandoned riverbed. And now that riverbed has been filled in. So just a concern on future building, and maybe we need to look at some solutions before we continue to build subdivisions.
Mr. Morrell, and I thank you for your comments. And again, I think it's another thing where it's going to be the city, the county, and Swift Mud all working together. I do remember when Valley Oaks, which is up north of where you're at there, and that golf course would flood on occasion before, and it is like a retention area almost. So I mean, there has to be some solutions found moving forward, but, you know, we're still looking at, working with all of the entities, Swift Mud and the county, together to figure out, you know, moving forward. This storm really brought a lot of things to light that we hadn't seen before. So, and I thank you for your comments.
Thank you very much for your time.
And again, keep up with the city on, when we maybe have a meeting that can be attended by citizens, too.
Can we get your address? Oh, I wanted it so I can look. Okay.
Okay, next person?
Next, I have Kyle Santos. Salvato.
Kyle Salvato, 4241 Skydive Land with Skydive City. Kevin, do you have a picture for me? We've all been through some tumultuous times. Good evening. I haven't seen you guys in a while. Sorry, I apologize. We've all been through some tumultuous times here, and Skydive City and myself included. Despite the damages and challenges we've faced with lack of insurance for certain things, and we were up within two days of the storm and running again, and continue to remain a driver of business for this great city of Zephyr Hills. So I've decided now that we're, it's time to give back and have a positive event for you guys and the city, whoever wants to come. Last weekend, we had over 150 people in Zephyr Hills staying for a special event. We have another one this weekend, as well as 60 to 70 participants from our well-known Qatar customers that are training for display. They continue, they have four camps scheduled with us next year for one month at a time, and this is the display they put on for the King of Qatar. There'll be 36 of them on Friday at, let me just make sure I get the times right here. I believe it is 1630 and 1900, or 1600 and 1900. So I wanted to open this up to the public.
Four o'clock to seven o'clock.
Oh, sorry. My former mer- Two separate times. One daytime show, one nighttime show. They had a pallet of approximately 2,000 pounds of fireworks. So if you see anything up that direction about 1900, it's not a UFO, because when you put 36 people together under parachute. But I wanted to open that up for the city, as we do to all our events. We have also the Sunshine Boogie that Joni, who you know well, has sold. It's their 40th anniversary for the new owners, so we're throwing a special event. The bar will be open, cafe, and so, public, kids, welcome. As you guys know, I'm a father as well, so I just wanted to open that up to everyone, as well as the city. I'm going to work with Kevin to hopefully publicize it for you guys a bit and bring a little positive for people to, in such a time where we've been through such deep challenges. All right? So that's all I got for you guys tonight. I appreciate you all and everything.
Thank you, Kyle.
All right, thank you, Kyle.
Thank you.
Sounds like a great event, too. Okay?
That's all that I have pre-signed up.
Pardon me, Ricardo?
That's all that I've signed up.
Okay, does anybody else wish to speak in the citizen comments? All right.
Vicki Wiggins, 38550 Fifth Avenue, here in Zephyr Hills. I just wanted to invite you out before you, since this Friday is skydiving, next Friday, Seasons of Hope, which is on the northbound One Way, I think that's Eighth, Sixth, Seventh Street, is Seasons of Hope, they're having their ribbon cutting next Friday at 11:00 AM. They're rebranding and wanted to re-celebrate their existence in our nice community, so I invite all of you to come out and attend. 11:00 AM next Friday.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? All right, seeing none, I'm going to move on to the mayor's portion of the meeting, which he has a couple of exciting little things for us, so I'll turn it over to the mayor at this time.
Thank you.
I know. They do this too. They do this stuff. It's okay. It's.
You're going to Todd's retirement party. Well, good.
She's a good liar, isn't she?
It was already incredible. Good to see about Todd.
So I'm excited to give this proclamation for you guys and I'm going to read it and then we'll go forward from there. Whereas Bill Nye Realty opened in Pasco County in nineteen-seventy-four and was the first Century Twenty-One franchise in the county in nineteen-seventy-five. And whereas Bill and Andrea Nye moved to Zephyr Hills in nineteen-seventy-one to teach in the local school district, he as a math teacher and Andy as a physical education teacher. And whereas both became actively involved in the local community, both personally as business people. And whereas the first Century Twenty-One office was located on Highway three oh one in what is now Island Boulevard and brought numerous new businesses to town that have shaped the community, including KFC, McDonald's. I remember McDonald's nineteen-seventy-five, ABC Pizza, John's Restaurant. And whereas Bill Nye Realty Twenty-One, Century Twenty-One sponsored teams and local youth leagues, some of which Bill also coached. And whereas Bill served on the board for both First National Bank of Pasco and Centennial Bank and was on the East Pasco Medical Center Foundation. And Andrea served in the East Pasco Medical Foundation Gala Committee and the Zephyr Hills Library Board for many years. And whereas Bill was a charter member of the Zephyr Hills Daybreak Rotary Club and spent countless hours and made financial donations to the projects for the betterment of the Zephyr Hills community. And whereas Bill and Andy donated their original landscaping for Lake Necessity and personally participated in the plantings. And whereas one of the most recent contributions to the community was bringing a VA facility to Zephyr Hills, greatly enhancing veterans' benefits to the many veterans residing here. And whereas in the past fifty years, Bill Nye Realty has provided many jobs to the local economy. Now, therefore, I, Melanie Bar-Montson, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Zephyr Hills, Florida, do hereby recognize Century Twenty-One, Bill Nye Realty, on their fiftieth anniversary of serving in the Zephyr Hills community. Thank you so much. That's so nice.
Thank you. And Bill was who was my tenth grade? My wife's D E teacher.
So successful.
Still not working, but. Anyway, something else, somebody don't know. He was a good, very good men's softball player, too. He's play on against him in softball way back in the day when we first started a men's softball league in Zephyr Hills, too. So he's a good, good player. I guess Andy probably taught him that, so.
And thank you guys for showing up to support them.
Yeah, thanks.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
We're proud of you, Bill. Your Rotary family's proud of you. Thank you. Yeah.
Well, that's very well deserved. Okay, Melanie.
Next we have update from Z E D C.
Wait a minute, hold on. As a gift to Bill, you can leave if you want.
Oh, as a gift to Bill?
Yeah, yeah.
Or you can sit through the meeting. There's going to be fast. If you can't tell.
I'm sure Todd liked that.
Of course. Yes.
There you go.
So good evening, everybody. Randy Stovall with East Pasco Chamber. And this year we're trying to do quarterly Z E D C updates. And you know, the big deal for this quarter was supposed to be our Economic Summit. And we do other things, but that was this quarter's big project. And so obviously it didn't happen in October, but it is rescheduled to December eleventh right here. So that morning, well, it's our, it's actually our next regular scheduled day anyway for what we call our stakeholders group. So hopefully we'll have a good turnout. I think all the speakers have said they could come and it'll be a good day. We we meet every month with staff and and other partners, P E D C, for example, in something we call Steering Committee. And we will have the next one of those meetings tomorrow morning at the Chamber Office here across the street at eight-thirty in the morning. So hopefully that'll be another productive meeting. I think it will. Some of the things that Vicky Wiggins and I participated in. Vicky had a great meeting with a prospective investor who wants to build a hotel, maybe. So I'm sure she told him good things about Zephyr Hills. We'll see what happens to that because we need more hotels here. She and I attended the P E D C awards ceremony. I know a number of you were there. It was a great evening for East Pasco. And I have to say, you council folks are, continue to be the leaders in the whole county. And this this was no different. If you look at the beginning of the ceremony, they always introduce the elected officials, right? Except there really aren't that many, except from Zephyr Hills. So you guys make us proud and we appreciate what you do. You know, we have a big research project that's underway. We'd hope to have that ready to report out to you at the Economic Summit. It's not ready. It's our business survey. It's our update to the one we did a few years ago. And again, Dr. Stephen Neely from U S F is doing that work for us. And we just have had, I'll say, challenges with our medical providers to give input. But he's on it and he's actually came to one of our Steering Committee meetings. And I know he had a plan and I'm sure he's executing that plan. So hopefully by January, we'll be able to produce that report for you. That's that's our hope. And I know some of you, Steve, thank you, tried to help us get get those surveys completed. We have an event that we kind of inherited from Dade City Chamber. It's now our East Pasco Chamber. It's called Access to Opportunity, which really is, I call it a cocktail party, but it's it's a mixer for elected officials in East Pasco to just come and let people see them and talk to them, whatever. That had to be rescheduled because, again, it's during hurricane time. And I think that's going to come up in February and hopefully many of you can come to that and meet some of your constituents. We we have a plan and in fact, Vicky had a schedule, but it'll have to be rescheduled. We have a plan to kind of, I think, increase the interest in our stakeholders group. And that plan is to start periodic field trips to some of our local businesses that, particularly some of the new ones that they might not know about. So we'll actually be able to go in there and talk to the people and they'll carry that image with them away. And hopefully they'll be able to use that and and their help for us. We are scheduling again to accompany city folks to the city, state and legislature. And I think right now we have our team tentatively made up. We've got our hotels, so we're ready to go for that. Hopefully it'll be successful again. And I think that may be, I think that may be it. So I happy, I could answer questions too if you have them. If not, thank you for your support.
Dr. Stovall, thank you so much for being here. Can you tell me again what time on December eleventh the Z E D C update is?
It's it's eight-thirty, the Economic Summit.
That you hit on it. Yeah, sorry. Eight-thirty, okay.
And then, of course, the the kicker, to get people to stay, get Chick-fil-A dinner, lunch. Got to stay for that, right?
For lunch?
Lunch, yeah.
And have coffee.
We'll we'll have something for breakfast, but it won't be.
We'll have coffee, too.
Steve, yeah, there will be coffee, too, for Steve. There you go.
Oh, there you go. August.
Anybody else have any questions for Randy? All right. Well, thank you, Randy. It's always good, always good to hear that update.
Thank you.
All right, Mayor?
All right. Next we have Michelle Hayes and Michael Clark that are going to talk to us about our water use permit.
Yeah, they're they're actually online?
They're online. Perfect. I didn't think I saw a face out here that I didn't know.
Right. Do we have an accompanying presentation that we'll be seeing, too? Okay. All right. So I don't know who's up. Is it Michelle or Michael?
Michael, start. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead. You were ready for you?
Uh, thank you very much. The opportunity to speak with you this evening. For the record, I'm Mike Clark with Jones, Edmonds and Associates. With me tonight is Michelle Hayes with Liquid Solutions Group. We came before you, I guess, back in February, give you an update on where we were with the new water use permit with the district. Along an arduous process, we know we'd like to give you an update tonight. We're kind of finally getting to the end of this, I think. And with that, I'll turn it over to Michelle to kind of, kind of give you the history of what's happened since we last met with you folks and what we expect to happen in the near future. Michelle?
Good evening. So the the slides kind of step through what we've done since we last were in front of the city council in February. At that point, we were close to having REI number two addressed, except for we needed to complete a site visit to investigate potential monitoring sites for the environmental monitoring plan. We completed that that site visit in March, on March seventh. And then shortly after, we were able to compile the full response and we submitted a response to REI number two on March twelfth. And the response addressed all the questions in REI number two. And the next slide. And then on April eleventh, we received REI number three. The REI number three specified that we needed to include two additional sites in the EMP plan. And they wanted them included in the plan before issuing the permit. So they wanted us to include one of the sites that we field investigated plus an additional reference site. And then it also requested that we submit a draft of the plan and coordinate field review by district staff. And it had questions about the timeline for the Orange Valley development, which is development proposed by the owners of the egg permit that is proposed to be transferred to the city as part of this permit modification. Because the city doesn't own any of the wetland sites, this REI required that we, the city needed to coordinate access to these sites in order to put them into the monitoring plan. The egg owners, the owners of the permits proposed to be transferred would happen to own property that has one of the wetlands. And it was selected as the most feasible for quick access and then as a long-term monitoring site. Once we believed that we had, were able to get access to a site to include the permit, we we updated the environmental monitoring plan and submitted it to the district for review. And that was June twenty-first. And then when we submitted it, we discovered that there were staff changes at the district. So we had new staff that had to get up to speed on Zephyr Hills. And they reviewed the environmental monitoring plan and we scheduled a site visit with them to visit the selected site. And that was completed on July sixteenth. And then shortly after that, we were able to submit a draft response to REI number three to the district for review. The next slide. And then as a response to that, on August thirtieth, we received draft permit conditions from the district.
I'd like to point out here, through the process here, back and forth, there are extensive negotiations that occur with the district, working on the details, the permit. Those usually come in the form of an REI request for information back from the district. And it's a a give and take to try and nail these issues down to the satisfaction of both groups. But once we got to this date on August thirtieth, as Michelle mentioned, we finally received the draft permit conditions. This is a, this is a good sign for us because it means that there is not another REI, at least hopefully not in the works. And the district now has said, okay, we're ready to give you the permit here. But here are the draft conditions we're going to give you folks that you're going to need to comply with. So this in essence becomes the final bits of negotiations to make sure that the city gets what they need to have and then also satisfies the requirements of the district at the same time. So I just want to point that out. Thank you, Michelle.
So the conditions that they gave us, they they require some middle of utility service agreements or basically proof of approval of development for any increase in water. It also has routine reporting every five years demonstrating that the growth is going to continue as originally projected. So basically, if if in one of those five-year reports, we show that at twenty forty, we have a reduced projected development, we are required to go back in and modify the report, the the permit to account for that and reduce the water quantity. It also limits the water use to four-point-one-one M G D, but it allows modification in up to four-point-four-nine M G D if we can demonstrate through some middle of service agreements or approvals of the developments that additional water is needed within the twenty forty timeframe.
And I'd like to just point out that, I'm sorry?
Can I, can I ask a question on the four-point-one? What what was the, what was our need with, based on our permitted entitlements?
So based on the the conversations or what was presented to council, the project list is the four-point-four-nine. Swift Mud and Mike or Michelle, you probably can answer this better, the four-point-four-one is what Swift Mud came up as our initial need.
Four-point-one-one or four-point?
Four-point-one-one, sorry. And then we can get up to the four-point-four-nine if we, as the projects are approved and the demand is is proven to be needed.
Would that be accomplished through a site plan, through a early, early phase?
Right, so.
Description of of the product that they're going to sell or how many, you know, how many houses?
Two different ways. Typically, it's it's through a utility service agreement. And that's where agreements reach between the city and the developer. They pay for fifty percent of the capacity upfront and they reserve their capacity. So it's then approved. Swift Mud, we believe, is going to allow us just to get council approval on the projects for them to move forward, I think with site plan. So one of those two ways are considered approval and and the proof of demand.
And can I ask a question? With that, are we going to have to go through the modification process again?
Get to the four-point-four-nine?
Correct.
Yes. It'll be a letter modification.
So is it going to be the same?
No.
Somewhat futile exercise that we've had this time?
Fortunately, this is Mike. Sorry to interrupt there. Fortunately, we don't think so. A standard letter modification to a permit is much, much simpler. It's doesn't require the back and forth. It's agreed upon by both parties. The permit stipulations here, so long as we are following them, take that into account. So it's much, much simpler process. It's simply a letter to the district saying, here's what we want to do and here's our backup to support that. And then we move forward.
Okay, so so they've given us the parameters with which we we need to comply to get the additional amount of water?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, this is Steve Spina. Mike, I have a question. So these water use gallons a day, like the four-point-one-one, that's for a timeframe up to twenty forty?
That is correct, sir.
So the modification for four-point-four-nine is what we have already in the queue. Am I correct?
Right. What we had asked for was four-point-four-nine. We went through the processes now for many months, demonstrating the needs, working with Todd and his group, identifying support and future demands, the best of our ability, also looking at demand, demand growth from the district as well. They've now come back and they said, we will give you the four-point. They've now come back and they said, we will give you the 4.11, but you can get the 4.49, you just have to demonstrate the need for it. And that's, uh, like Billy said, that's the, basically coming back, either having a developer's agreement or something as simple as the council giving approval for development to move forward. And that would be justification for doing that. If that occurs and we are at the 4.11, we would then use that letter modification process to stake up the next step, whatever piece or portion of that next step to 4.49 we can get. 4.49 is going to be our limit, uh, for the 2040 number.
Oh, how long, and this may be a Todd question, I'm not sure. How long do we estimate the properties in the queue to take to develop and come online?
And so it depends on the project, or the project. Some are coming out of the ground now, some are 10, 15 years out. Um, very similar to, I mean, very similar to what happened in, um, you know, in the past. So developments move at, at their pace, depending on the developer, the landowner, the economy. You know, was it '07, and everything was moving, and then it stopped? And a lot of the projects that we saw come online were paused for 10 years. And then, kind of the, the green light lit and projects were built within two years. So, um, to be able to give a timeline of when they're going to come in, come on, come online, uh, I think it's hard to do. What we laid out was, I think, the longest project was about 10 to 15 years. The quickest being a couple of years.
Oh, do the, um, the projects that are within the queue, do they have a timeframe of they have to, um, do something, or are they holding a place in line indefinitely?
They're holding, the way it's written right now in the modifier, with the, uh, moratorium is, moratorium's in place, and we're not approving any. Even developments that are coming from, uh, not even looking for annexation, we're telling them we can't service them right at the moment. Because of what we have, this 4.49 addresses the projects that were in the, you know, quote unquote, queue.
So, at this point right now, then, if you're not in the queue, you're not coming in, you're not developing, you're not doing anything. You're not getting property outside the city, nothing.
Right.
So, we'll have no new growth other than what's in the queue theoretically until 2040?
It, no. So depending on what council wants to do, uh, you know, this is, um, this is to be able to address the queue. Uh, I think the next conversation is, what do we do about future development that's not in the queue? Um, you know, and how do we supply water to those developments? You know, is it, you know, and there's, there's a litany of, of options. You know, it's, it's putting in a reservoir and, and pulling from that down to purchasing water from another entity. And it's in anywhere in between there. And there's pros and cons to each of those options. But that's, um, I think that's the next part of this conversation is, so right now, we, we know we, we can get to the 4.11. We can get to the 4.49 if we show demand, and as demand, um, continues to track that direction. But to go beyond what we know about the developments that we know about today, we have to find another, um, source.
So if I'm in the queue now, and, um, is it in order? Or is it just whoever comes first or whoever goes first?
Whoever, whoever comes first, with the exception of if they've entered into a utility service agreement and have paid upfront 50% of the capacity fees to reserve their spot.
Warner could kind of jump to the front in that case then, because he's done that. So, one, when these projects come in, then you're going to keep tabs on, right now, you're going to keep tabs on the water that will be required for development. And when we get to the 4.11, we stop, and then we, the next one, we start to do the modification?
Uh, I'll let Mike and Michelle answer that, but I believe it's as the projects are approved. So let's say, um, just pulling a, a project off the list, Gagny PUD comes in and they move forward. Or, or one of the projects that's not in that 4.11, then we can add, we can do a lot of letter modification to increase that capacity closer to the 4.49.
That's correct, Billy. Yes.
So some of, yeah, if I can just real quick, so some of these projects, again, to the next slide that, or the next presentation that you'll see, there's a list of projects with approved plans, projects with PUD approval, and then there's projects with no approvals. So if one of those projects off of the no approval, you know, of the list that has, does not have approvals, comes in, we can then take that and show it to Swift, or, excuse me, do a letter modification to Swift Mud and increase that what capacity?
Uh, the, the short version is, I think we, we've got on the table 4.11 that we can use for growth over the next several years. If we want to exceed that number, 4.11, then we have to just provide a letter mod back to the district saying, yes, we've approved this new development, it's going to use X amount more gallons. So the letter modification is going to bump us up from 1.11 to that next level, whatever is needed to support that new customer coming in. The other thing I want to point out, as Michelle mentioned a moment ago, there is a requirement now in the permit for every five years to provide a report to the district demonstrating the growth. And what that really means is that the table that we've included in the permit application now, which is the one that Billy's referring to, including all the stuff that we know that Todd's come up with and the, the planning folks have given us. Every five years, we need to provide an updated list of that group to the district and then prove we still need the growth. If, for some reason, like Billy mentioned, we have a 2008, things slow down, we have a downturn, we do run the risk of actually losing some of the quantity we have. They will take back some of the 1.18 if we can't demonstrate that we actually have that growth coming in. So it's something to keep in mind. They're anticipating the growth, they're expecting the growth as we are. But they've told us, if you can't demonstrate you need the water, they're going to take it back.
We know where we are now. I know that our current permit was for 3.3 gallon, million gallons a day. You know where we are now with what, what's been in the queue and what's been?
4.118.
I've seen.
4.118 is, is what we need to meet the demands of what's been approved and, and what our current use is.
Billy, it sounds to me like, um, the limit's at 4.118500. The projects that we have in the queue are going to put us right at that limit.
Projects that we have in the queue will put us to 4.493. The projects that are approved will put us at the 4.118.
So there's two categories, approved projects and those in line.
Correct.
And, and.
That are, that have had conversations that were considered in the queue when we put the moratorium in place.
Until the developer writes a check for the 50%, we're not guaranteeing them that. Is that correct? Okay, and we can, we can say, the question would be that when we approve a development, we can say contingent upon approval from, from Swift Mud.
I believe so, yes ma'am.
So even if we approve it, we're not committed to them if for some reason Swift Mud comes back and says, uh, sorry, you, you, we, we're going to give that water away to someone else. You know, that's the thing I would be worried about is can we, you know, when we approve something and, and the developer is counting on us to go forward, we have to have some stipulation that if for some reason they reneg, we've, we've got protection. Okay.
Mr. President.
Um, I think.
I'm sorry.
Are you still?
Yeah, well, my concern is that where, once we finish these projects that are in the queue, that we're going to be right where we're at now. We're going to be going through.
Absolutely correct. That is, that's, that's 100% correct.
Yep.
That, that's concerning to me.
And I just had something on, so at the, we'll, we'll do a five-year report, and it shows that we're not moving forward on pretty much anything. And they, would they go for the reduction? And then all of a sudden, two years later, we get hit just like we did this last time, where everybody wants to develop all at once now. Do we have to start the whole process over again, or we, will we be able to, you know, once, once they re, I know, I know we don't have to just to go for the increases, but if they give us a decrease, and then all of a sudden we need to increase, do we have to start the process over again?
I'd have to defer to, to Mike or Michelle on that one.
Okay.
I don't know.
You guys possibly know what I was talking about there? Mike or Michelle?
I'm, I'm afraid I couldn't answer that one. Michelle, what do you think?
I, I think, yes, it's potentially, if, if we produce a five-year report that shows we don't need the 4.11, and we go through the process of doing a modification to reduce it, we would be back where we're at trying to get it again, because they could potentially give it away to somebody else at that point. At that point, it's not ours.
All right, thank you. That answers my question. Uh, hold, Councilman Spina?
Um, yes, my, thank you, Mr. President. Mike and Michelle, um, I have a question. Suppose that we're better stewards, stewards of our resource are by reducing irrigation use. So we've basically, our per capita amount is going down. I mean, in other words, are we going to get penalized for being better stewards of the resource?
Generally speaking, uh, the, the low-hanging fruit for most communities is to try and reduce. And the first method to do that is almost always reclaim water to reduce irrigation. Since irrigation typically in Florida at least makes up a good portion of our potable water usage. So yes, if we are good stewards and we can reduce the overall potable water demand, then overall, we are still working within the cap, the 1.18 or the 4.49 for that matter. I mean, all, all the district is going to look at is how much water you are producing and selling, uh, below that cap. It doesn't look at the, well, actually, in this case, in your permit, it has a rare trigger in it that does require you to put some groundwater back in at the wastewater plant ribs. But reclaimed water is another component of that, which we can, um, hopefully enhance and improve to help our, extend our water usage further.
Right, but, but I'm saying is if we reduce it through less consumption, we're basically going to get penalized for that.
Correct. It is, you're absolutely right. Yes, it's, it's a cash 22. Let's, hypothetical, if we are very aggressive and doing water reduction techniques, and we don't have the growth that we're seeing right now, the folks in the, aren't coming through, you do run the, at our five-year report for not being able to demonstrate that you do need the water. So yeah, that would be a possibility.
Okay, thank you.
So, just to counsel, so in a way, we're kind of boxed in because part of the problem that got us in this predicament was that a couple neighborhoods or developments were planned to, um, develop over five, seven years and built in two. So you had a onslaught of new customers. So, the problem we're going to see is to keep our water level up, we need more development. Which is another thing we're trying to slow down because of traffic and all these other things. So we're in a box of, if we, if we get the development we need to keep the water levels up, then we're adding problems in other areas of the community, infrastructure.
Yeah, go ahead.
I think it's important to look at this a little bit more holistically. I mean, I think that we're not the only people in this, that have this problem. The reality is, is that water is becoming more and more, potable water is becoming more and more of a scarce resource in our state. So one of the things that, you know, as long as we have that water, we're still going to be, it's still cheap water, quote unquote. It's not that we don't have water, it's that we don't have inexpensive water available to, to the developers after a certain point. So as long as we have the availability of inexpensive, relatively inexpensive water, we're still going to be a more desirable place to come and develop. At some point though, we're going to be at that spot where we say it's BYO, it's BYOW, it's bring your own water. If you want to develop and you want to be annexed into the city, you're going to have to find a spot that has agricultural wells or, or has, you know, that you have to purchase the land from the.
Correct.
So you're laughing, but that's what it is.
Oh, I wasn't laughing, no, I wasn't laughing at that. No, 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 that's not what I have a smile on my head.
It's kind of good phrase because that's kind of what it is.
Right, no, you're, you're spot on. That, that's what the conversation has been, um, both between us, Pasco County, us, the consultants, uh, us as a, at a staff level, is, it's not that we're running out of water, we're running out of inexpensive water. Um, and so after this 4.49, it costs money because we're very fortunate in the location that we're at is, our treatment is we add chlorine to the water. We add chlorine and then we ship it out, you know, we, we push it to the customers. Moving forward beyond this, it's, it's, you know, where do we purchase it from, or, or their holding costs, things like that, so, you know, as we're buying it from other individual or other entities, you know, there's a cost to that, and, and they dictate what that cost is, right? And so you're absolutely correct, is that we're running out of inexpensive water.
Even our treatment system isn't the same as some of the other folks' treatment systems, so it would require some kind of retrofit if we didn't.
Yep, you're exactly right.
Okay, thanks.
Which kind of brings us back to your point earlier, when developers come, there's going to have to be a conversation, hey, this is what we're going to have to be able to allow you to do because of X, Y, and Z. So that was important, what you brought up before. Okay, um, any other que, go ahead.
One other question, because I know we're primarily talking about residential consumption. Does, is this also for any, like if we have an industrial user come in that needs quite a bit of water?
Again, I'll defer to Mike and Michelle, because they can explain it better than, than I can.
All right, does anybody have any other questions? Because, okay, go ahead.
So, this is the, um, draft permit conditions. When would we get the final permit?
Well, let's.
Next slide.
Yeah, I was going to say, can we let them, let's let them go ahead and continue on with what, with their, uh, presentation. And if you can, in the presentation, address the, the commercial aspect that was brought up too. Okay, so I'll turn it back over to you guys, uh, Mike and Michelle.
Thank you. Michelle?
Okay, I, I'll start with the commercial, and commercial is included in the 4.49 numbers. It's basically included in the gross per capita. A certain percentage is assumed going to be needed because you're going to have commercial growth with the residential growth. If you have a large industrial user though, sometimes they could exceed that, and, um, the city does have one such user. And we did include a projection for them in, in the request. Um, if another large industrial user came in, that could change things, and, you know, they would need to be considered along with maybe some of the other residential developments as to where they would stand in the queue. And then, um, I guess going forward, this, this slide kind of steps through what, what we've been doing since we received the draft condition. To make sure that we understood them, you know, we, we contacted the district about setting up a meeting and submitted some written questions or comments on the initial draft conditions. They, they sent us back some initial responses, and we were waiting to get to a meeting. We, we were able to meet with them on October 28th and discuss the conditions. And through that discussion, we agreed that we would submit a rewording of what we, the draft permit conditions to be. And we sent that last week. And then if we go to the next slide, the next steps, so if we're good with our proposed condition wording, then, then we could move basically into the permit, um, step. So negotiation of draft permit conditions, uh, you know, we anticipate they may have their legal review. It could take a little bit of time. But once we get the draft permit condit, or the permit conditions agreed upon between us and the district, they would then send the permit for board, board review, and so we need to get on to the next board meeting. I think the, the one in December is going to be too soon for it to get in, and then, so our hope would be the January one, which I think is at the end of January, we were discussing is probably the earliest it could get on for the board review. And then if the board approves, they do the final permit, and then the city publishes notice of the permit. And then it could be challenged, you know, with 30 days of public noticing, somebody has the, the time to, to challenge the permit.
All right, thank you. Um, go ahead.
We didn't have the last two slides.
Correct, this, the presentation was updated today.
Does anybody have anything further, um, a question or anything? Uh, and I think an interesting point was brought up about the conservation, because we've been implemented a couple of things here recently. And I think an interesting point was brought up about the conservation, because we've been implemented a couple of things here recently to encourage in conservation. And at the same time, it's going to, looks like it will impact us negatively too. So, I mean, I know, so, so me, with only four, it, it will, it will seem that we are just going to be perpetually in this position of needing more water every time somebody wants to add just one more, even just a small development. And that seems kind of like counterproductive to me. The other thing I would like to, I'd kind of would like to know the numbers on and maybe we can put CJ on a homework project or extra credit project. But in the last month, I know I've been taking a lot of Navy showers because we've tried to stop, you know, the water usage because of the lift station problem we had. I would be interested to know citywide, I mean, some people citywide were doing it and other places more so than others, but I'd like to know if there was a reduction in water use that you could really track and see. If we can try and get those numbers or something, just to, just for, you know, a point of reference.
You can get those numbers. We have a monthly report that we do, the monthly pumping report, so we can see from month to month.
I'd be real interested to see how that turned out. And then the other thing on conservation, if, if we have to start getting, we talk about inexpensive water versus expensive water, if the water becomes expensive, I'm, it's going to create a conservation thing where people, and I'll be yelling at my grandkids, turn that water off. And, and so it's going to create that same issue. I mean, not issue, but it's going to create that same deal. So I, I just
I'd just like to add on the conservation thing. I mean, we're kind of speculating that we'd be penalized, maybe if we can show that we've reduced water somehow because we put online more reclaimed. I'm trying to think how you would show that's the reason it reduced. You know, I think I'd like to give staff a chance to talk to Swift Mud staff to see if there's a way. Because certainly they would encourage
And that, that sounds like a great idea to talk with about.
That would be good if we could have a conversation.
We want to continue to encourage the conservation and so.
I mean, there's other ways to conserve, I mean, in terms of requiring the new products, you know, fixtures in new buildings. We've talked about, we're going to get with Amber about doing remodeling current buildings with fixtures that have better standards. And then the other side of it is really, I mean, if you're reducing the water, you're, you're not going to need it. So it's not really a penalty if that's what happens because this whole
They take it away from us, you know, some of our capacity away.
Right, but if we're not, I mean, the whole contract seems, the agreement seems to be built on actual need. So if we're not using it, we're not going to get it anyway. So.
Yeah, I mean, it's a statewide problem. Everybody's
Yeah, I mean, this isn't just our problem. Everybody's in touch with water.
If you have a lot of extra on your permit, it kind of makes sense that they would reallocate it to somebody that, that needs it, but.
And the next conversation is, and then we'll, right now, we, it seems rough, but it may not be as bad as we think in, in terms of alternatives. But
Right, Mayor, did you have anything to add or? Does anybody have anything else or? I think Matt had a great point there. We need to just, you know, check with Swift Mud, hey, this is what we're doing, this will be implemented already and this is what we're doing to try to conserve, you know, try not to.
Yeah, we're just kind of inferring that from the calculation they use of gallons produced and sold. I would think let's explore all the avenues before we say that that's the
Okay.
end all be all. Well, part of it, if you're reducing the, the per capita use, you know, there, that creates capacity potentially for another development or, you know, additional units to come online. So yeah, it's a delicate slow dance that we, we do of, you know, reducing, you know, the use either through irrigation, through landscaping, Florida friendly, Florida Water Star, we implemented that. So as the developments come in, they're putting in, you know, lower flow toilets, lower flow use appliances. And so it's a delicate dance that, that we do because if, if we do reduce it too far and, and we can't show the demand, that will be taken away. But then that also, you know, kind of hamstrings us on what we're allowed to develop. So it's, it's a
I just think we have to guard against Yeah, we just have to guard against that two and a half year process of going through to try and get the thing.
We also have a pretty substantial number of projects in our queue, you know, that we're applying for. So I haven't had the conversations with Swift Mud, but I could understand why they would want almost like a clawback provision because, you know, what if
Oh, I get it.
10 years goes by and half of these having
Right, right, no, I get it.
Like in 2006, then we got this giant permit
Right.
and there's people all around us that are out of water.
No, it all makes sense. And like, and like Billy was saying, it's going to be a kind of a delicate dance to.
Which I will say, Swift Mud has been great with working with us. The conditions that we're working through right now, it's, it's just taking time to, to get all the wording right. So but we're, I think we're at the finish line.
And I would assume that we would get adequate notice if they were deciding to take it back. That would give us time to react in any event, right?
I would make that, I would make that assumption, yes.
Okay. Well, thank you, Michelle and Michael for the presentation. That's given us a lot to consider here and hopefully everything will just be moving forward without any interruptions.
They're, they're actually
Thank you very much.
They're going to stay in line for the, the next item as well.
All right, so if there's nothing further on that, I'll turn it back over to Mayor for the next item.
All right, we have the moratorium on residential developments to talk about the projects that are in our queue.
Right.
Now, is Billy, are you, who's going to be presenting?
Todd is the man.
Todd's going to, thank you, Todd.
We retire.
Got three minutes. Do you hear me, Todd? You got three minutes.
Okay, we just put together a brief PowerPoint presentation to go through the developments that we have in the queue. We've got an overall map and we broke them down into a couple of categories and summarized the moratorium that we're currently under. And here's, here's just the, you know, we've had two, two ordinances regarding the residential moratorium. 146123 was the first one. Then we extended that moratorium back this past year, 1479. And yeah, the moratorium, I think you're all aware what it applies to any type of residential land use applications that could be anywhere from annexation, land use, zonings, site plans, subdivisions, which require plats generally, even a conditional use if there's, if it's residentially inclined. There's a couple caveats that were put into the, the ordinance based on timetables when projects had submitted. If it's under one acre, the moratorium didn't apply. And, and also if they had a utility service agreement with the city in place prior. So, yeah, we also put on there what the expiration date is coming up. The last one would be, of course, as you see there in the middle of 2025. Here's just a map showing the developments that you've heard mentioned tonight, all the residential developments that are in the queue. And Tommy Lee put this map together, broke it down into three different categories. First being the yellowish color that's approved plans. The greenish color is projects that have no approval at this time that are in the queue. And we also broke out the, the PUDs as a separate category. And what we've done is we've broken these down into these different categories and just shown what these projects are that fall under the categories. So the first category being projects with approved plans. As you can see here, here's a, a list of those projects, the name of them. They're located on the map and you also see the total number of units. And, and there's a variety of different levels of approval. And we put asterisks underneath each plan to show what level of approval that they have. And there are some variations in that. And if you have any questions, let me know. We did break out, as I mentioned, the PUD projects. Examples of that are Advent Health, Island Park Town Homes. Advent Health is of course by the hospital there, Island Park Town Homes. That's on Island Boulevard, Fort King Road area there. Gateway is the project on the south end of town between A and C Avenue. Healthier Stay, that, that's out there by SVB. And then the Gagny PUD, that's a mixed-use project, South Side of Chancey, just east of the rail, west of the railroad there, a mix of single family and, and townhomes.
These are all approved?
Correct. They have PUD approval.
Right, right.
Again, you can see the asterisks below, there's some varying levels of approval of what these PUDs have. Most of them don't have. Like the Gagny PUD, that, that's the, the one at the bottom there. It does actually have construction plan approval. They don't have plat approval, but most of the others don't have any construction plan, but they're in the queue, again, being on this list. And here's the, the remaining prod- residential development projects with no approvals.
Todd, can I just interject here real quick or ask a question? The number of units per development, that's the max units they can build. That's not saying that's what's going to be built.
That's correct. These numbers could be less. Some, some of these projects, we, we had some conceptual plans that showed the number of units, some we didn't. So then if we didn't, then we probably have the maximum based on density per zoning. Correct.
But the projects with no approvals are in the queue because they had paperwork in.
Correct.
But they didn't have other, the, the, and they don't have what is listed under their particular project.
Yeah, like Palm Cove Independent Living, the one at the bottom here, we haven't had really much communication at all for some time now. Yeah, six to eight months, Rodney says.
Where is that located?
Uh, that's on the north side of 301, the east side, kind of the bottom of the hill there.
So that's the development that came in, received conditional use for height, right? And it's also a transitional, if, if I remember right, it's transitional type housing from independent living to nursing home living. Right, in my
Thank you.
Yep, so.
Or we might have a demand for that, the, the, you know, financing might not be available. There's all kinds of reasons.
Came into play from what we've heard, correct. You know, Austin Ranch is going forward. Nick Apartments, we didn't hear for, from a long time, but now they're all of a sudden, they want to pay their fees, so we'll see if that goes forward.
Where is that?
Nick Apartments is on Fort King Road, the, on the west side. There's that kind of low area there.
South of Valleydale.
Just north of the summer field.
Summer set, summer set.
The one near Centennial Bank.
Yeah.
Yes, it's near that, it's, it's closer to Valleydale, just south of Valleydale. Again, that one came before council was given a conditional use or conditional approval for height for a four-story. But has not moved forward. If we kind of walk through these, just because I know Todd and I've talked about this slide, this slide probably more than any other slide. And then sitting here, Matt asked me a question. I'm like, oh, yep, we didn't think about that one. That's why we have an attorney sitting up here with us. So Abbott Park, Phase Five, if you remember, we put a hold on Phase Three and Phase Five Plats because of the Kosick Road issue. So that would have been built, even though they haven't moved forward. I did have a conversation today with Metro Develop, Metro Representative, asking when they, when the city can receive Phase Five plans or the five, excuse me, Phase Five plat. I told them we can take it in, we can review it at a staff level, and then we're going to hold it until we see some dirt being moved on Kosick Road. And that's a conversation that we'll continue to have. But I just wanted to kind of give that update on that part of the project. Go ahead.
And that's the one that's on Wire Road or that?
Correct.
So, so should we not look at that a little more carefully at, at the time right now? I mean, given what we know about water.
Absolutely.
That's a
I mean, that, so we have construction drawings already on those? It's Are they submitted? Okay, they are submitted.
Yeah, a while ago. I mean, that's, that's all part of that same neighborhood that's built down there and that, we just held them up from approving the plats on three and five because we wanted them to build Kosick first.
Right, right, right.
But, I mean, my, my issue is a lot of these people on these, looking at this slide is it says no approvals, but I don't want you to take it as, oh, we don't have anything on these because I don't think that's a fair assessment either. I think a lot of them probably relied on the fact that they were in a queue because we've been telling them that since the first moratorium went into place. When we came up with this list, Abbott Park, Billy and I held that up to put pressure on them. So I would have a, a problem. I think we would have a legal problem telling them they can't move forward if, because of this moratorium, if we're, we're changing it. Because I
And let me ask you a question. So all, these were all part of the ones that we were saying they were not part of the moratorium?
Exactly. That's what this list is. And this is the end of the list, I believe, right?
Right, correct.
Right.
Yes. So when we first passed the moratorium, these were the, these items were included in the list that was saying they're not part of the moratorium. They're already, they're part of the queue, on the queue.
We, we specifically identified them. It said not down by the moratorium. So then things have happened since then. They've taken action, they've spent money, they've relied on things from a legal perspective.
Well, and I got to admit though, that I wasn't really comfortable with the way we just let that you're in the queue without any specific things to be met. Because if you look at these here, they're all at various stages. And, you know, when we, when we first started to talk about the moratorium stuff, obviously there was a lot that was involved, but water was one of our biggest things. We've since found out the stormwater is one of our biggest things now too. So, so I think, I think these that are in the queue, even though they're in the queue, they're at various stages. I think that, as Councilman Smith just said, we're going to have to address things with them on an individual basis, not just you're in the queue, you just do whatever we had going on there.
We have to be very careful, and I want to interject, I want to cut you off real quick, because we have to be very careful. The moratorium is based on the availability of potable water.
Right.
Has nothing to do with stormwater sewer.
No, I know, but I'm saying since then.
I, yeah, no, no, I understand that, but the moratorium, the way it's written, development is paused because of potable water. If we want to, and Matt can correct me if I'm wrong here, if we want to consider stormwater and that, the moratorium, it needs to be changed because right now it's only paused because of potable water.
No, no, I was, I'm just saying that things, other things have come to light. And as we address the ones in the queue, I think we need to address them you know, on an individual basis.
Like what we talked about earlier.
Right.
You and I were talking, okay.
Yeah, like we talked about earlier, yeah, I was trying to bring something else into that.
Okay, sorry, I was, I heard something different. So the conversation that, that Council President and I had was as these developments move forward, depending on, on what council decides, as the developments move forward, we have to focus on the transportation issue, the stormwater issue. You know, obviously the water, you know, the conservation and all that. But we need to look at the stormwater in the areas that became issues through this past event. How do we mitigate some of that and address that through the plans moving forward? Okay, I just want, I understand now.
Okay, okay.
You mean, looking at each individual site plan, construction plan?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I thought you were wanting to
Oh, no, no, no.
stop them again.
When you look at this list here, you know, those first three, Abbott Park, of course, that's been going for a long time now. Funk Street, we've been reviewing those plans for a long time. Providence Village, y'all familiar with that? That's the one on the south side. We've been working with the applicant and their representatives, their engineer, we, I've met with him. We're proceeding to, for their plan's middle. Only reason they haven't submitted now is, you know, they had a lot of trees down as a result of the storm. So we asked them to amend and update their tree survey, which I think is the right thing to do with that.
I'd just interject real quick. Funk Street, back to that, we met, I don't know, a month ago now, I guess it was, to look at some, a concept of using container homes on Funk. So I think a couple, at least one council member, maybe a couple, along with staff, toured the the conceptual layout. And so although we don't have anything out, I mean, sorry, we have a site plan submitted, it's not yet approved. We've been meeting with the owner about that concept of using container about that concept of using container homes there and providing something that's a little, potentially a little bit more affordable, um, than the traditional, uh, units that we're seeing.
Now, projects like Nick Apartments, the Palm Cove, where we haven't had really no activity for, uh, coming up on a year. Maybe that's something we look at a little differently. I don't know. But, uh, uh, you know, a lot of these other projects, we've had some level entitlement and/or review and working with the applicants. There are some that we haven't had no activity, so.
Alston or?
Uh, that's off, uh, Alston, kind of heading out towards the airport on the right.
Out there, okay.
Kind of towards the end out there, water plant.
So, you know, I just did a little quick math here. We're using anywhere between two, two persons per unit to up to 3.2 people per unit or whatever.
Right.
That works out to somewhere between six and 10,000 people. So just for example, last year, 27,000 people moved to Pasco County, 6,000 people moved to East Pasco, and 1,000 people moved in the city of Zephyr Hills. So if you look at that, that's, those are rough numbers, but you know, that's, that's several years. This is, 2040 is probably, that's probably realistic. That's, it's basically doubling the size of our population. So I can see that. I, I don't think we're overshooting here. I think that we're, I think we're going to use every bit of that water. And I think that if.
Short order.
Yeah.
I, I have a couple of questions, if I may. Um, I, I don't understand what conversation you talked about earlier, you said?
He was talking about a private conversation.
The council, council president and I had a conversation about development, the, the process, these projects. Um, just like I call each of the council members and ask, do you have any questions? The questions pertain to stormwater and how we address that and the, and the use of potable water.
So, since the moratorium, we've approved about, at least in three projects, in terms of rezoning or a PUD, um, about 460 units. And just, that's just three projects. So, um, and that was before we even had the water permit. Is, uh, clarified or satisfied. The issues that are causing the biggest problems in term of water use, uh, in, uh, transportation infrastructure and from waters out the community are the lo, larger, uh, residential developments. So you also mentioned on here that you're going to look at some of the plans we have, the city development plans. Um, I don't know where I saw. Anyway, and I think that has to be part of what we do. I think that, you know, we may have limited development, um, due to the potable water situation, but I don't think that stops us from saying we want to limit it further if, if we see a need to do it because of storm drainage. Oh, I mean, we, are there additional ordinances?
Yeah, you, you, what, yeah, I think what we were trying to say is that it would have to be separate purpose, a separate ordinance, separate, you know, moratorium. But, you know, moratoriums have to have, they have to be temporary and short-term, preferably a year or less. Uh, because once you get over a year, even if it's a temporary hold, you run into Burt Harris Act problems of impacting people's ability to develop the property.
Um, I, I don't think any of us are against growth, nor are we against property rights. And, and all these people have both, I mean, are part of the growth phenomenon, if you want to call it that, in East Pasco, and all of them have property rights. Um, but I think we have responsibilities as well, um, to make sure that the growth we, we do is sensible and orderly. And I think we've, we've basically tried to do that. Sometimes, you know, you, it, it's hard to keep up really with, with the amount of the projects. And you can see that just by what's in the queue, um, that, you know, I don't know how y'all do it actually and keep up with the, the different demands of, of getting. But I think we need to look at, um, we probably need to review some of our budget and, and look at what we can do to improve stormwater. We need to get with, um, Pasco County and the state emergency. They have, they have promised us assistance at the, at the beginning of this. And I think we need to make sure that they get some permanent solution. But I think we need areas of the flooding, that some of it's in town, it's not really part of the growth problem. But Ninth Avenue or something, or even Henry Drive, it may require purchasing a home and, or even Hazelwood, you know, purchasing a home and, and providing additional retention, uh, at the very least. So, um, I think once this permit is resolved, the current moratorium pretty much will go away because that's what it was set up for.
Right, that's correct.
But I think that we need to keep ahead of the issue so that, um, we're not going so fast now that we're going to start causing other problems.
But I was going to fini, finish with this. The water use permit, we did do it longer than a year, but that's because we didn't have our update yet. So our, our need was still there and it wasn't just, we were sitting on it. We were actively working on it. So I felt, from a legal perspective, I could advise you that we were fine to extend it. If you wanted to do another moratorium on issues unrelated to the water use, you know, I think i- i- if you want to take some time to slow things down for the planning department to, you know, look at our stormwater requirements, loo, look at, um, our transportation issues. I think we can do that, but we would need, you know, a separate ordinance with separate findings and a specific purpose and a timeline given direction to planning of what to do and, and when they need to do it by. Um, that's all I was going to say.
Well, I, I was going to say, maybe we need a workshop because I think, you know, we've budgeted money for some of the hotspots, for the turn lanes and different things. So maybe we need to kind of coordinate hotspot with project and look at some of the drainage and how we can resolve some of those things as we go. And, um, you know, maybe you don't have to do a moratorium, but you have a plan to combine the improvements with, you know, tie them with the development. So if, let's just pick one, well, I won't pick one. I'll just say, let's just say we have project A. And within that service area, there's a hotspot or two, then we don't finalize all that until the hotspots are fixed or built or done.
Well, and part of the new transportation study requirements, you probably remember, there's language in there that was new that we added in specifically regarding the hotspots. If you're within a mile of a hotspot, city has the opportunity to review, negotiate with the property owner developer to, to address the hotspot need.
Yeah, I, I think it's cleaner to, to do it that way and do it through some ordinances and through planning than it is, um, you know, doing another moratorium.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Plan it with the project, plan those things. Um, maybe we need to sit down and come up with a, uh, some kind of stormwater drainage system for various parts of town where we know certain things are happening and, and now we've seen things happen that never happened before. So we can get kind of a head on some of those. So.
Yeah.
Link them together so that we're not proving the project, then trying to build the hotspot.
Correct. I agree. I, I think part of where we're going to have to start is what is our level of service? You know, what is our expectation of flooding? Um, because again, what we've, have seen here, we will not solve with our, our ponds. Because, you know, most ponds and most development, the drainage is built to 25-year storm event. Uh, if they're within a spa, basin of special concern, 100-year storm event, 100-year 24-hour, 25-year 24-hour. Um, my understanding is that a lot of the, the, um, culverts and, and the stormwater pipe, that's all built to 10-year 24-hour storm events. What we experienced was somewhere, depending on where the numbers exactly fall, somewhere between a 200 and almost a 1,000-year storm event. Um, on top of the, the saturation that we had up to Milton. So Milton alone was a 200 to almost 1,000-year plus the two 4-inch, uh, rain events. So I think we have to determine what that level of service is going to be. That's something we have to communicate to the public and realize that if something like Milton happens again, there's a possibility that we still see all the flooding because we're not going to be able to address and build 500-year 24-hour storm ponds. Um, and I, I believe council, um, I mean, we've had those conversations and I think everyone agrees. But that's just something that we're going to have to get out to the public so that they understand, you know, we're, we're working on it. We're trying to get, you know, some solutions. But we're not going to be able to solve everything. You know, we might be able to reduce some of it. Um, but it's not going to be a full, the, you know, everything's completely dry if, if we have these type of events.
Yeah. Um, so, you know, the probability is none of us live to see this happen again. The possibility is it happens next year.
It could, it could happen every year, yeah.
Yeah, it could, yeah. So you have to, uh, like you said, you have to get it, the information out there. Councilman Smith had something too.
Yes. And, and when I'm thinking about this, um, the projects we have approved are on this list where the projects we use when we got our SWIFT mud. So basically, this is it for now. Right? So we only have water, we're hoping for this approved list. So in, in essence.
Any one projects.
Until we have another alternative, which we will look for, this is it. So, and, and I agree, what we need to do is, is look at the other parts of it too. If some of these can help with stormwaters in certain areas, that's what we need to do. We need to be very responsible as we go through this list, the hotspots, you know? But, um, you know, when I'm thinking about it, it's like, we were talking about moratorium. Well, we've got water for this list and that's about it. That's it.
Uh, Councilman Smith?
Um, my concern is especially with any new projects, that these new projects don't impede on people that are already living around them. So maybe we can put that, maybe we need to put in more drainage or larger underground utilities to deal with this issue. Because this is one of the biggest problems that I'm hearing from people is that, you know, these projects are being built higher. Of course, you know, you're going to build your property, so your property will flood. But the people that are, that are all around you aren't, aren't lifting up that. And so I think it's up to us to make sure that, that these new projects, I'm not talking about the ones that are in the queue especially, but, but, uh, well, even those two, they need to make sure that theirs aren't going to impede on other people. So we need to really look at this stormwater issue. And, and I agree, if we don't need to do a moratorium, that's fine, but still.
Yeah, I, I think, I think we need to be very careful, um, because the, the plans that are approved are designed to, to day standards. Um, and they hold the water pre and post-development. Um, so I would, I would be very careful in saying that the development is what caused this flooding. We, we had a very, we had an unprecedented rain event on top of a very wet season. Um, and the, the developments that, the new developments, right? So you pick what new is to you depending on how long you've lived here. Um, they were built to whatever the standards are at that time. Um, so at, you know, at this moment, they're 25-year, 24-hour storm events. And, um, unless they're within a basin of special concern, and it depends if it's an open basin, closed basin, basin of special concern, open or closed basin, and what the design requirements are. Um, and so it's all based on pre and post-development. So, you know, it's, if the water flowed across your property and, and went into a neighboring property, if they build a subdivision there, whatever flowed there prior to development can still flow there. Um, you know, it'll hold a 25-year storm event. But again, when we have unprecedented rainfall, the ponds are going to fill up and they're going to spill over. Now, can there be a question about where that spillover is and, and, and where it spills and how it spills? I, I think there can be because we've seen some areas that people have brought concerns to us as a staff, and we're going to look at that, uh, kind of where that outfall is. And, and so we'll, we'll ask those questions and try to get answers. Um, but I think we have to be very careful to say that development is the reason why this flooded.
But that's not what I said. I didn't say that at all. What I'm saying is we need to make sure that new development doesn't cause that.
Right, yes.
I didn't say that.
Okay, understood.
Well, and, and there again, it's still, it's, it's not just our problem and our issue to resolve. It's going to be a partnership between Alston County and SWIFT mud to come up with a solution too, so.
Correct. When I say we.
Right. It's, it's, that's why I'm clarifying for everybody that, that it's, it's going to be a lot of entities involved in order to do that. Go ahead.
Todd, and, and help me understand this. When a project comes through, they come through with their engineering, and then we have another engineer look that over. Is that right?
That is correct. That's something we started about two years ago, probably. In the past, we didn't do that, but yeah, since we don't have engineer record now, we're doing that on a regular basis now.
And as part of that, it is stormwater, you look at this, the, the engineer looks at the stormwater too.
Essentially, everything engineering related. And, and, and just to follow up what Billy has been alluding to, I think, um, uh, we are moving forward with the hotspots. I kicked off the, the pre-app meeting with Kim Lee Horn, and we've even talked about some prioritization of those hotspots. Uh, you know, for example, I talked about Geiger Road, you know, just, we know that's kind of a hotspot that's been brought up recently. You get about getting a right-hand turn lane, southbound on 301. So we'll, we'll prioritize those hotspots to, with areas of development that are occurring. And, uh, we've also, of course, applied, began the application process for the resiliency grant, uh, from the federal government that will allow us to look at that whole Zever Creek Basin. And then I think now, if there is a positive thing about about the flooding is we know where the water is. So even if you're not in the basin of special concern, I think we're going to try to be very proactive in looking at every opportunity to take advantage of the knowledge that we have now and apply that in development review and, and look at opportunities to improve the, the drainage retention of that particular area, e- even the surrounding properties to try to get creative.
I think that's really important because the, the engineer of record is only looking at that particular property. But if we have an engineer that's reviewing it and says to that person, hey, you know what? We know that this is a problem, that this, this water runs from this property to this property, and now we have to address that as part of your development. Otherwise, here's what's going to happen. So having that, having someone who's knowledgeable about the general overall drainage for our community, our entire community is going to be really helpful.
Yep. You're right. Expanding the area, it's not just this.
Yeah.
It might be a bigger basin that we need to look at.
We're going to think that's what happened this time.
We're going to try to map the areas now that we know have been flooded. And yeah, when a project comes through, there's different ways we can hopefully holistically address that.
Well, a lot of the flooding occurred in older neighborhoods, you know? You, Silver Rose is an example of an older neighborhood that's a little lower. Island Boulevard was not there when it started to be developed. That changed the makeup. Then the other developments are built on, based on the elevation of Island Boulevard and, and different things. And so, you know, the neighborhood that the gentleman was here tonight, that's a 40-year-old neighborhood that I don't know who engineered, doesn't have any retention. It has flooded numerous times because we heard from them over the years. So, um, you know, there, there is a lot that goes into it, but at, when we, uh, the city manager and I attended the county meeting on the flooding and, and the, uh, county administrator said that the ca, commission has asked them to look at some of their uh, development plans and how they can tweak or look and see. And I think we should do the same and we should be on the same page because, you know, the property's a joint. So, you know, I, I think that we can, we can always do something a little better. Um, I think that, I don't know what much could have been done when you had three hurricanes in a row, two of those heavy storms in between. And, I mean, one night in here, we had it, the, the parking lot here, we couldn't hear each other talk.
It was two feet of water up.
And, yeah, so, um, there's a lot to look at, but.
No, and I, we've.
And I think you guys are trying, trying to do that. I'm just saying that rather than maybe go with another moratorium, link our, link our plans for infra, infrastructure improvements of any kind with the development at the time so that we're not catching up all the time. That's all.
I think, you know, Bill, another thing that Billy and I both have been doing is try to be proactive, is talking with engineers like Craig Cornelius and just talking about drainage level service. And he provided quite a lengthy engineering, uh, scenario. It's difficult for laymans to probably grasp, but I think we provide you with copies of that information. But, yeah, I think we're going to. But, yeah, I think we're going to try to collectively get with engineers, you know, Swift Mud, be good to have in that, and I think Pasco County, that's Zephyr Creek Basin, that's part of the east, you know, west, you know, watershed area, that, that's part of even a bigger issue. And then, again, while we're looking holistically at all that, remember, we're going to have some stakeholder meetings where we look at the comp plan and visioning, and we're kind of look at all the remaining undeveloped land and what you guys see and envision in that for a vision, and that's another opportunity where we can kind of have a say in how those lands develop.
Well, I don't know, do you have a major question here?
I was just going to say, you know, in terms of county development, what's that project they're doing up along?
Two Rivers.
No.
Village Pasadena Hills.
Yeah, that's huge to watch, you know, I mean, not to mention Two Rivers.
And that could have a potential impact on stormwater runoff, too, so. But you had said before something about possibly a workshop to discuss the moratorium, and you expanded it beyond, maybe not the moratorium, but some of the issues that you were saying we need to be addressed, do you, do you think it's?
Stormwater. I'm thinking, you know, I mean, I came in here thinking we need to strengthen the moratorium, but I think if we come up with ways to strengthen how we permit projects, then we don't need a moratorium, once this expires.
Okay, so what I'm saying, if, if you would mention something of a workshop, instead of having Todd and his team look at something and then come back a month later and give us a presentation, and a month later, where they go, did you want to have a workshop where we kind of discuss those items, so everybody's kind of hearing at the same time, maybe have the planning commissioner, too, like we've done before? So that everybody is, you know, communicating all of our ideas at the same time?
I think we need to, you know, I think we need to be aware, we have a lot of issues kind of pressing against us, and we need to come up with, talk about it, hear from our staff, and, you know, and get those kind of.
And we'll have, you know, in another few weeks, we'll have a little better handle on some other things that happen, too. So I think that's a good idea, I think we should have a planning commissioner, too, as, as part of it, and, and we could talk about, as you said, it's almost a matter of pushing out some information, like what our, it's built, based on a 25-year, what'd you say again?
25-year, 24-hour.
24-hour thing, so that's what everything's kind of based upon, that Swift Mud approves at this point, correct? So, you know, that's, those are things that people need to hear, too, and.
Right.
Okay.
And I, I, when I talk to people, you know, there is complaints and concerns and upset people about flooding, but they also want to know that we're working on solutions for helping prevent or minimize things in the future. So I think we have to come up with, you know, and we can't do it all one fiscal year, we're going to have to have a plan and figure out how to do it, and earmark our spot, the hotspots, the water hot, all the hotspots.
And, you know, we do need to be very realistic, that if we have an event like happened here, I don't think there's a way that we can plan for that, I mean, quite honestly, I mean.
It becomes too much of a.
Yeah.
It's 20 inches.
Now, is it going to happen again? Like we said, it might happen three years in a row, I sure hope not, but it might, you know, we don't know, we don't know. So we have to do as much as we can and be as responsible as we can, but the caveat is, there, we can't, if it gets a 500-year event, we can't, we can't plan for that, really. I mean, we know where the water goes, though.
Yeah, we know where it'll go. So, so just, just for a point of reference, what I handed out to, to each of you, I'll just talk about the first two pages, the first page that is in that packet is the, the real-time flooding in Silver Oaks. If you flip to page two, that's the flood plain mapping application, it's eerily similar, if not identical.
Say that again, Bill.
You don't have flood insurance, and you know this is going to happen to your house.
Right, so, so page one, page one is the actual flooding in Silver Oaks, page two is a flood plain mapping. So if you flip between the two, and I can get you, you know, kind of the same-sized map, it is almost identical of where the flood zone is and where the flooding occurred. And that's, that plays out throughout the city, you know, in several locations.
You're talking about, these are known flood zones.
These are known flood zones that we pull off of the property appraiser's website, it's a, you know, it's a, it's a layer that you can lay on top of the, the base map, so Ninth Avenue, 16th and, and Henry, 17th and Henry, so all of those areas, it's, it played out very closely to the way Silver Oaks played out, like where the flood zone is, is where the water was.
One thing I did notice, especially about this, is a lot of places that flooded severely are not in a flood zone. So, I mean, that just goes to show you the strength of this 100-year storm versus a regular.
I'm just, you know, I'm watching people in my neighborhood and around restoring their homes, you know, they've, they've gutted them, they've had to have restoration companies there, everything, all the drywall, all their furniture, everything is out on the street. And I know that we can't predict another storm like that, like Milton was, but I do want to be able to say, we're doing everything we can to help prevent it in the future. So, you know, I don't want to be in the same position next year, watching all these, you know, happen when they've just fixed them, you know, like in $100,000 improvement things, so.
Counselor Proctor, do you have something to add to?
Well, and it's like, it's like you said, Steve, Councilman Spina, a lot of the, that first storm that went past us and caused all the damage flooded out a bunch of people, and then a month later, they, they're all fixed, and then now they're destroyed again, and they got to start all over, so, I mean.
Well, here's one of my concerns is, you know, we've been talking about these that are in the queue, okay? And I think we all know, knew what was in here, but when you look at it on a spreadsheet, there's 21 projects, 21 projects, and Steve did the math, about, about 1,800 units in the queue. So, you know, we know that, that the community has been talking to us intensely about our development, and I think when they see and understand that these were already in there, I'm not sure we're, how we're going to mark, we're going to have to make sure that message is going out there, so they understand that, that these were in there prior to the moratorium.
Well, and I think, I think you're right, and, and like someone brought up earlier, I think Billy was, but, or Steve, somebody, a lot of what they've seen right now being developed was approved way back 2007, early 2000, mid 2000, it just all hit us at once, those things were there, projects sitting there for a long time, so, and, and, you know, we, we could go that route again, where nothing happens for a while, then it all hits us at once, you know.
Just seeing, you know, when we approved a couple, you know, the, I think the projects on Geiger Road, the rezoning, or we did the hospital PUD, you know, they, the, the free press put something on Facebook about the project, every comment, what about the moratorium? I thought you had a moratorium, why, you know, it's like, we, we didn't even, I don't think, explain exactly what the moratorium was trying to do, but I'm not sure it really accomplished what we meant it to accomplish.
Well, not when, not when we had 21 in the queue, no, right, not when.
Arguably, that 21 would be 41 today if we didn't do the moratorium.
And it might be.
At the pace we were going.
It, it, it might have been, I, I don't know that it would have, you know, and also, I really want us to be cognizant that, you know, we're talking about some of these communities that are in county zones, but they're surrounded by city, so when you look at that watershed, and what is flooding, like out on Wire Road area, that area, we need to make sure that we're looking at not just, this is the city limit, okay? And especially right on Hazelwood, that's been a big concern, obviously, I live across the street from there, I've watched this, this area be a concern, and then we're building on both sides of it, that is, we're going to have to be very cognizant of this and make sure that we have everything in place, and we, we trust our, our, our engineers.
Well, and I think, and Counselor Proctor had a good idea, we do a workshop on this, we probably should have a representative from the county, so when we have questions in that workshop that they could answer, some sort of representative from the county that can address some of that, that you guys are talking about. So I guess we're pretty much in agreement about a workshop to address those. I don't know if anybody has any other questions for Todd on this, we're pretty much.
Yeah, and, and when, Todd, when did we start the basins of special concern? It's been quite a while, right?
Oh, it's been over a decade.
So, so, I mean, I, I mean, I think that, that our staff has been very responsible as far as that goes, because they've acknowledged that there's closed basins, there's acknowledged that there's areas that we do need to be concerned about, and this was well before this storm event. So, I mean, and, and, and we, there's not an engineer sitting up here, okay? So we have to rely on the professionals to do their job, and we set, and, and I think we need to be, to, to set the bar as high as we can, for sure.
Absolutely.
But, I, I, I mean, I think our staff's been doing a real good job, they've been proactive as much as we can. Regarding the hotspots, we know that a lot of the traffic that's being generated here is not within our city, okay? And, and we know it's going to continue that way, because there's 25,000 entitled on the south end, there's 40,000 entitled up in the connected city or whatever it is. So we're going to still have to deal with that traffic, regardless of if we don't do any of these.
Permit one job.
None of these, we could say zero, and we're still going to have more traffic coming in. So we need to, you know, I, I don't know how you get that out, because it's a salacious headline to say, here's another 250 apartments that were entitled 10 years ago, okay? But that's not a part of the headline. So, I mean, we're going to fight this, this is going to be a fight that we're going to have, and I remember saying to Dave Walters, who was sitting in that chair right over there, that you need to make sure to let everybody know that just because there's a moratorium doesn't mean we're not going to have building going on, because we've got the entitled units. So, I mean, I, it's, it's frustrating, and we know we can do a better job, but I think our staff's been doing a good job as it is.
Okay, so going forward, we're going to look at getting a workshop, all the entities we described, does anybody have anything else on this particular item?
Do you want to schedule that workshop now, or do you want us to, to look at dates and, and talk to?
You probably want to look at some dates, and if we want to get somebody from the county here, we can, you'd have to coordinate that with them, but, I mean, I wouldn't push it off too far, but, I mean.
Do you want it before the new year or after the new year?
For the new year.
I'd prefer not to do it before the new year, but if that's what council wants, we'll do our best to make it happen before the new year.
You can check with them, I doubt they're going to, I mean, we're getting to the season where.
No one works.
No one's available, and, yeah, yeah.
Everybody's taken off.
I mean, yeah, if, if you pick a solid date in January, you're probably going to be, save yourself a lot of time and trouble.
Okay, right. Perfect. Okay, all right, we're going to move on to the consent agenda items, there are five consent agenda items that we can approve all at once, or pull any for further discussion. I'll turn it over to council.
I would like to approve, I would like to remove 2.4 from the consent agenda and approve the rest.
I'll second that.
I have a motion to second to pull 2.4 consent agenda item and approve 2.1, 2.2, 2.3, and 2.5. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Our motion passed unanimously, and we will now address consent agenda item 2.4.
This is the, the reason I pulled it was because it's, well, I explained to the city manager, I think we have to revisit how, when we piggyback something, the type of material we include in the agenda packet, because that agenda item was, we are piggybacking from the Tampa Hillsboro Expressway Authority, and that packet was like 270-something pages. Infotech was the very last item in that packet, so you had to go through 275 pages to get to that, and to make sure you didn't miss it. Not only that, but then it said that Exhibit B was the pricing, and Exhibit B was not included. So he handed out the pricing at the, and what I would recommend is, if we have a situation like that, and Matt might know the legality of this, but I would say, you know, approve the minute, include the minutes of the meeting, and then say entire packet is available for review by, you know, at the clerk's office or something, and then just put in the part that's pertinent to what we're doing.
I think that that's acceptable.
Good idea.
You know, and that way, we're not, yeah, because, I mean, by the time I got to, I didn't know if I missed it, if it, you know, anyway. So I think the rates were the standard rates, so I will recommend we approve this, I just wanted to explain a few items about it.
Second.
A motion second to approve consent agenda item 2.4, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you very much, and I agree with you, I was like, wow, I'm getting lost in here somewhere. All right, so, next is the finance director report, and I will turn it over to our finance director, Ted Beeson, at this time.
Yes, council, we have within your packet an agreement with Carlisle Thompson to go ahead and provide us assistance in preparing our FEMA documentation for reimbursement on Milton that we've just gone through. They specialize in this sort of thing, and it's a piggyback situation, Seminole County is the, is the original agreement. They're here tonight to ask, answer any questions. Stephen Bryce has been with us, and yes, he has grit and determination, he's here with us, the entire meeting. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Somebody have a question for me, sat through all that, and, anybody have any questions?
Oh, I just want to come in, I think it's a good idea to get some help with doing this, because it's a specialty, and, and we want to be sure that we maximize, it's like hiring a public adjuster, you know, we want to maximize what is in the cities entitled to, our taxpayers are entitled to.
Totally agree, so, if there's no, if there's no questions or comments, I'll.
I'm sorry, we don't have any questions.
I'll turn it to the council, then.
Move approval to this item.
I'll second.
I have a motion to second to approve the agreement with Carlisle Thompson on our FEMA public assistance grant, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously, and thank you very much for sitting through this, so.
The exhibits were there, too.
Thanks for doing that.
Okay, city managers report.
Kevin, you want to present this, the wall sign? Kevin's baby. Kevin White, City of Zephyr Hills Public Information Officer. So shown here is a mock-up rendering of what the lobby wall sign could look like, it has our full logo and tagline backlit, and there's some white outline, as you can see, surrounding the logo, because of the porcelain wall, the vendor basically has instructed us that to limit the number of hole punctures into that delicate porcelain wall, they have to have some sort of backer to put it in place. So we just wanted to get your thoughts and ideas on this and any recommendations going forward.
Anybody, go ahead.
Have, having had quite a bit of experience in interior signage, I'd like for you to consider asking them to prepare you, to prepare for you a, like a cardboard mock-up, just so that you understand the scale of that, because the way that photograph is taken, you're standing way back in the stair, right? So, and it, there's a little bit of a panning effect there, but that's an enormous sign. So I just want to make sure that we, that you've done that, and that you have a real clear understanding of what that looks like, and maybe get a couple of other opinions.
Okay, yeah.
Just a suggestion, thank you.
I thought it was a little, I'd like to see it a little smaller, too.
Here down a little bit more?
Here down, yeah, otherwise.
The design is great.
Yeah.
And I think it looks great, but if we were to want to put any displays out there underneath, it might get covered up. So I agree with that, that it, it, it needs to be a little bit less massive.
So raise it up a little bit and make it a little bit smaller as well?
Just in case we had anything below it.
I think Councilwoman Wicks said it right, if you put a, if you put a piece of cardboard, you know, cardboard mock-up, whatever it is, it's a little easier to visualize as far as what do you want to put below it or above it or so forth. When you talk about a backer. as what do you want to put below it or above it or so forth. When you talk about a backer, is that on the sign itself, or is it, is it the attachment, or is it backer inside the wall that needs to be in there for? I'm not quite sure on that.
That's a good question. I'd have to go back.
It's on the back of the vinyl. So that's a, that's that back.
Okay, so on the back of the actual sign itself.
Yeah. So the back of that, it's, it's like a layered vinyl. Okay. So your colored is on the front, the white is that outline on the back of it. So you're not seeing all the white. If you were to see it from the back, it would just look white. Does that make sense?
Yeah. And is that, is that for the lighting aspect of it, or?
No, that's, that's the white outline. The lighting shows up.
Yeah.
It lit.
The white outline is to, because you can only, what I've been told is drill so many holes into the porcelain wall.
Right.
Otherwise it would be delicate. And also the backers utilize to hide some of the electrical wiring for the light up.
Right.
And, and bolted in.
That's why I just wanted to make sure when you were talking about the backing, what you're referring to.
Yeah.
All right. So there was a couple of suggestions. Anybody have any other suggestion on it, or?
One other question. Have they provided you with like an actual sample of the channel letter or the backlit letter?
They have not, but we can request that.
Yeah, so that you can see the dimension, also how far it sticks out from the wall. There are some requirements as it relates to ADA. You don't want anything more than four inches protruding from the wall, you know, just to prevent someone who's sight impaired walking into it or whatever. But we also have, and our mayor, and someone knowledgeable about signage as well.
There a little light around?
Yes.
And you're going to then ignore what I told you, Ken? If this is channel lit, then it's not vinyl.
Okay, that's.
Yeah. If this is channel lit, I didn't understand. I thought this was going on Plexiglas. This isn't going on Plexiglas.
No, not like on the second floor conference room. It would be different than that.
Okay. Then ignore what I said to you.
All right. And I know we, we looked at this one time. It's been a couple of months ago. We were trying to figure out how we could put some sort of a water element there and everything.
Right, and the water element.
I know it's cost prohibitive, probably.
Yeah, we did some, some research, and it is wildly, wildly expensive.
But I think, I think it's important that, that light, I mean, that, that sign is lit, like at night, when this is closed down, and people are walking downtown, that it's pretty visible. So.
Yeah.
Okay.
Awesome.
All right.
Great. So I'll take this information back to the vendor and get some more information and some printouts and cutouts and go from there.
All right. Thank you, Kevin.
All right. Thank you. Great job.
Is that all you have? City manager?
Kevin, if you want me to come by, just let me know.
Okay. We're moving on to the mayor's announcements at this time.
All right. I just want to, just have a couple of things. I wanted to give a shout out to our community for the events that we had celebrating the veterans this weekend. It was a massive field weekend. If you didn't come to them, you missed out. With the battle reenactment out at the Military Museum, and then our parade was beautiful downtown. And then yesterday, we had the closeout at a 11, on November the 11th, and we had quite a few people there on, for us that day, too. So I, I'm proud to live in a city where we honor our veterans.
Amen.
On this level. And I appreciate it, and we heard that throughout the weekend. So thank you guys for, for that. I think you know that I had my first youth council meeting. I'm overwhelmed and excited with this youth council. They'll be coming to you to get introduced, maybe not December, because they're waiting for their shirts. We'll see. They're going to come when they, we'll see when they come. But they're going to be meeting once a month, and they are ready to rock and roll, and we're excited to see where they're going to head. And I was overly impressed with the ideas that flow, that came from their minds as we, we visited with them. And the mentors, our community mentors, are going to be amazing to help with them. The Great American Teach-In is this month. If, if any of you have time, and Ken, I know the high school is still looking. I'm going to be at the junior high this year doing the civic classes there. So I can't be at the high school, but if anybody is able to, okay, that would, that would be wonderful to do. And then today, I was able to do something a little bit special with one of our private schools, and they asked me to come and swear in their student body presidents, presidency. And it was an amazing experience for them, one that they'll remember, and it was a great experience for me, too. So I love my job and the ability to touch the people that we're able to touch in this community. So thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm going to the Woodland.
Oh, you're going to Woodland. So he's going to Woodland. So if anyone could work on the high school, I know they sent us a sign up to do the high school.
Forward that to our emails.
Uh huh.
I didn't see it come through.
Yeah, I'll, I'll send you that.
Thank you.
For sure. Okay.
All right. Is that all, Mayor? Back to the city manager.
Just a few things. Great American Teach-In staff will be at Woodland Elementary. They reached out. I think we have like five department heads that are going there. Update on the, our response, our recovery for Hurricane Milton. We've currently picked up just over 53,000 cubic yards of debris, and all lift stations that were flowing into Station 28, which is the one at, in Silver Oaks, are all pumping. They're all on electric, no generation. Lift Station 30, which is Wedgewood, that one is still being pumped. That one, staff's working on tomorrow, see if they can figure out if it's a collapsed line, broken line, clog. Just there's, there's a lot of water between where the station is and kind of their access point or section in there that they can't get to. So they're going to start working on that tomorrow. Another good thing, if you did not hear, Ryan Gwynn, local Zephyr Hills grown individual, is the, got confirmed as the fire chief for Pasco County today. So good for him. And then on a sad note, Cameron Stewart, who is a sanitation employee with us, left for a different career path about a year and a half ago. His dad is Roscoe, who used to work for us as well, is retired, and his mom is Jody Stewart at, at the PD. She's a dispatcher, but Cameron passed away in a motorcycle accident on Sunday. He will have, or there will be a service for him Sunday afternoon from 2:00 to 4:00 up at Hodges Funeral Home. So I just wanted to let everyone know that. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. City attorney?
Nothing for me.
All right. City council, start on. Steve?
I don't really have any. I wanted to ask a question about, the managers. RFQ that was sent out for the theater preservation. We said, we, we prepared the RFQ.
The theater RFQ.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
I'm asking that, did we, we, the city prepare the RFQ for the theater preservation and restoration?
No, Main Street paid for. We paid for it to be developed by CPH, the same architectural firm that's doing the city yarn.
It was a timeline that went out.
It, well, it went through Karen, so I didn't understand who actually.
I mean, Karen helped with it. There's no doubt about that. But, and we, CPH created it. We also put it on the Open Gov site so that, just trying to reach different, a better mix of architects. So it will also be print advertised as well. So that was them. Okay.
Dr. Spina, no, I actually did have a chance to review that to make sure that Main Street's, as the liaison on behalf of the council, that Main Street is, is following best practices. So.
Yeah. So, sorry, to answer the question, I didn't understand the question, but Karen helped with the posting onto the, not.
Bid net.
Bid net, so that we can get a, so Main Street can get a larger pool of, of response.
Sorry, I, I just wasn't clear on what our role was in, involved in that process because, you know, we've been advised that it's a Main Street project.
Correct. Yeah. We, we worked, they, Gail worked with Karen for Karen to post it so that there could be a larger response pool is, is the involvement of the city.
I do think that there is still interest from the, me and our historic planner to get in there and have a look at it. So I've not heard back from the president.
Yeah, I've always also asked to be included in that if I could. So, yeah, we just haven't heard anything back.
Councilman Proctor?
I just have two things. I'd like to thank the mayor for all of her hard work in training up our future leaders for our great city. I'm really glad that you brought this back. I know Senator Burgess started this when he was our mayor, and I was just really glad to see this moving forward, and I can't wait to meet him. And secondly, we've been, the city's been through a lot in the last month with these storms. But I really want to thank the city manager. He really, I'm, I mean, that first few weeks, I don't think he slept at all. He probably slept here. But he really helped move this city forward through a major disaster that we've, I've lived here for 35 years, and I've never seen anything like it. And I just appreciate his hard work. And all of our department heads and all of our employees have really stepped up, and that's what's great about our city, and that's all I have.
Thank you. So I just want to echo your compliments to our team. I, I have to say that when I look around at the response times for other cities, friends of mine who live in other smaller communities, they, they don't, they didn't have nearly the response time that we did, that, you know, our residents had debris cleaned out of their yards within two weeks. And it was just really, except for those folks who struggled with the water, the retained water, I think for the most part, our staff did an amazing job and are still working very hard to, in fact, I sent a text to our city manager. I noticed over the weekend that there were tanker trucks lined up along the south, along Meadowwood, the, the road to Meadowwood Loop, so Alston to the east of, of Cruisin Field. And there were tankers that were dumping water into the swales that are to the, that are to the south of the airport. And I just texted him to be sure that he was aware of it, and of course he was. And, and, and that was the ideal location because there was lots of area for filtration. It wasn't disrupting anyone else in that area. So we still have a lot of trees down in our parks. I know that there's a struggle to get all that together, but mostly everything looks great. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Couple of things. One, and it's the same way, the staff did a great job. Everybody did. And I, I told Billy this, and I'm going to tell this on him. I had called him Sunday after the storm, and I was kind of excited, a little excited. And I was like, I don't think you understand what's going on. And it was a little overwhelming, probably for both of us and everybody, but I, I thought, after I talked to him, I said, man, I don't know if he's going to make it through this thing. But he did a great job. He did a really good job, kept us informed. And I felt so much better, we had that meeting when we were looking, when we met at the, the police station, talking about all the issues that we had. And everybody just jumped in there and did what they needed to do. I mean, everybody, every department head, I think, just did a really good job. Every employee did a good job. You saw the guys out there working seven days a week. It didn't matter, you know, they were out there. And that gets old. That gets old, but they were still out there doing it. So, so thank you so much for that. And I was glad that we were able to get the, the overtime to the people who so deserved it, too. And I think it's a good idea, Ted, we get help for the FEMA. I mean, that's, that's a very complicated thing, and I'm glad you, we're getting the help we need to do that. And Shane, I was going to say, I had sent an email to Shane because the lights were out at the park bathrooms the next day. They were back on. So thank you. Thank you so much. And really, you, unless we let somebody, even the public, if, if you see something and it's out, let us know. And there's a, there's an app, the See Click Fix app, we're still using. So, and it's a good tool to be able to quickly put in for some type of a service from any of the departments. So, but again, everybody did a great job, and I, and I thank you all for that.
Okay. And I kind of want to say the same thing. And we, we got to remember, too, that all this they were doing, that's in addition to their regular job and everything that still has to go on to keep the city running. So I appreciate everybody's work on that, too. I do want to bring up one thing I didn't get with you, Billy, earlier. Freebie. This is a, I guess we'd call them a rideshare type program. We seen, city manager and I, a few others saw a presentation, and they would like to do a presentation before council, which I think council would like to see it. They would like to do it before the end of the year. It's just a presentation, so it's not anything that would take a lot of discussion or anything. But if you could set that up for one of the next two meetings, we only have two till the end of the year, correct?
Yes, November 25th.
All right. So we'll, and I will have to, I'll reach back out with their lobbyist and, and speak with him about it. So do you think it's 25th will work out?
A very light agenda.
Okay.
It'd be a great meeting.
All right. So I'm going to, I'm going to give them that date, and I'll let them get in contact with you. The other thing I want to say is, the Zephyr Hills High School, this is the fourth year in a row, won the district championship for a football team. So we're in the state playoffs again, and they will be hosting, I'm not sure, I was trying to find out who it was exactly, the region we're in. It could be LaCanta or Leesburg, somebody from that region. But anyways, we'll be looking to advance in the state playoffs with our football team. And that's all I have, so.
President, one thing. Billy, you think you could have that clock set, right?
Yeah.
Daylight Savings was a few weeks ago. It's been messing me up all night.
Charlie was over here yawning every time he looked at the clock.
I know. Thank you.
All right. Meeting. All right. Meeting adjourned.
Sorry. The only one clock.
Thought you got it easy, huh? We'll see you later.
How are you?